Morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock. We are going to start our workshop. It's August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can we call it an order, please? Kennedy?
Ishmael. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
David Barrow. Ashley Henson. Jordan Scott.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Patrice Parsons. Keith Alborn.
Here.
Joshua Binghamman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have enough for a quorum. I'm out. I'm out of rhythm without my paper. So up first, we have citizen comments. And so first, I have, uh... Kara D. Dominicus. Did I say?
That is perfect.
Man, look at me. I'm already starting good this morning. You see how you saw like, huh, let me make sure I get this right. Okay. If you can, please come up and speak into the mic. Uh, can you? Can you please state your name again and address or residency, please?
My name is Kara D. Dominicus. I live at one fourteen Ringmaker Cove, Bastrop, Texas, seven eight six oh two.
All right. Thank you.
Comments?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so apologies, my first time ever doing anything like this. So I'm a little bit nervous and if I say anything off topic, I apologize. Uh, my first concern is the water resource and planning for that. Um, I'm really concerned that we are able to maintain a healthy water system and also make sure that businesses, uh, respect the rules around what our water policies are. So that's thing number one. Uh, and then the other thing I'd like to, uh, be considered is, um, I really love it here. I've been here for two years. Um, making Bastrop a more walkable, pedestrian, and bike-friendly city. Um, I think those two things are top of my mind right now. And that is all I have to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to apologize. I was supposed to do my intro. It just dawned on me. But you can thank you.
You can.
Oh, I can do so. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Up next is Pablo Serna. Good morning, Pablo. Again, can you please?
Pablo Serna, eleven oh four Hill Street. Uh, so if you finish together, I'm just gonna read the... I'm sure everybody has their copy of the B three code. I don't see it here. And we're about to change it. Um, so this is from the executive summary. Recognizing the importance of retaining Bastrop's unique character and timeless charm, the community decided to take a journey. The journey began with a mission to repair and maintain existing Bastrop, then plan and design for the city's future, and finally turn the goals, vision, and mission of the community into the required expectations for growth. The Bastrop City Council initiated a temporary moratorium on new development to halt potential detrimental development from developing under the current outdated land use regulations. The journey began in the summer of twenty eighteen with an initiative called Building Bastrop. Building Bastrop became the initiative to guide responsible development that honors Bastrop's authentic past and prepares the city's sustainable future. I just read that because a lot of people think that there's people that were in opposition because things need to be updated. That's actually written into the code. We have to update our code every year. But we don't have to throw the whole code out. And I want to emphasize that you really become familiar... I was sat in your chair at one time. Uh, you really become familiar with what is in the code. And not just the technicalities of it, but the spirit of the code. And the spirit of the code is that the people that met, it was a lot of people. I won't say thousands. Didn't take account, but it was over a period of years. Met, a lot of concerned citizens met. And they talked about the history of Bastrop, the different character districts that we have. Um, the historic, not just the historic district, but other Hunter's Crossing, all around Bastrop. And we talked about how we wanted to see Bastrop grow. And that was put together in those three documents, those three manuals, the B three code, the technical manual, and the pattern book. We created the pattern book as a way to guide developers who would want to come and develop in Bastrop. But because of our code was pretty demanding, pretty demanding, you understand that, we raised the bar for development. Because the code was pretty demanding, we put together a pattern book that if you look at that pattern book, it's chock full of pictures of houses and places around Bastrop. It's like forty-seven pages. So the code that was developed was custom developed just for Bastrop. And if you were to gut it and just pull out parts of it indiscriminately, you're gonna ruin all the effort that a lot of people took, a lot of time. And, uh, you have a lot of weight on your shoulders, in my opinion. You have a huge responsibility, especially if you're gonna change things. You gotta question every reason why do we want to change that? What is the alternative? What's the better reason? It can't just be, we have a problem, let's gut it. It's okay, we have a problem. How do we fix it? And can we fine tune it? And what's a better solution? I've yet to hear from a people that really don't like the B three code, what an, what a better alternative is. There's a city which is north of us in Taylor. They love it. They got a very much, they patterned their code after us. And...
Pablo, that's your time. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Pablo. Um, up next, we have Thomas Jefferson, the third.
How you doing? I'm Thomas Jefferson, the third. Uh, this is my first meeting, so I'm just here to try to fill some things out.
Can you, can you talk into the mic and please give us your address?
My address is thirteen oh three Newton Street, uh, Bastrop, Texas, seven eight six oh two.
All right. You have three minutes.
All right. So like I said, this is my first time here, so I'm just here to learn about what's all going on in, uh, Bastrop and see how it affects us over here on the south side. Uh, because we have been noticing a lot of changes going on, which we're, we're loving it. Um, been here forty-some odd years. Uh, just want y'all to keep in mind when we do come to this planning and zoning and development that goes on around here, some of the things I've been noticing is not really paying attention to the runoff when we're developing these, uh, buildings and stuff, especially where we're at, you know? It used to be all dirt and whatever, and now we're putting in buildings and concrete and we haven't been really considering the runoff. And a part of that has affected us. Uh, fifteen and sixteen, we were flooded twice due to that development. So I know this gentleman was talking about code and, um, it's good that we have it and we're trying to force a lot of things, but I feel like some of that stuff was kind of circumvented and not followed, just all because we want to develop. Um, so with that said, just keep that in mind around here in Bastrop. And also, I've noticed the increased traffic that we're getting in that area. So I think it's also gonna be important to get the infrastructure in, the roads and streets right, too, when we're gonna be increasing traffic in these small areas and stuff like that because it does impact people in the community. And, uh, but other than that, um, just gonna try to attend more of these meetings, see what's going on because, like I said, I did notice we're getting a lot of development, especially moving towards this side now. And, um, we love it. We know things can't stay the same here in small little Bastrop, but, um, but we gotta do it smartly and make sure we're not impacting the people here in the community in, uh, uh, in a, in a negative way, in a, in a sense to say so. But other than that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. All right. Do we have anyone else? All right. That's it for citizen comments. Thank y'all. All right. Onto item four. Now it's our workshop. So I will do the introductions. So, um, thank you all for coming here this morning. Um, this has been something that we've been trying to get for quite a while. Um, it's been in the making for a while. Just due to, uh, different scheduling conflicts, it's, it's kept getting pushed back. And we just finally had to pick a day for it to work. And so, uh, this is the day that we decided upon. So again, thank you all for showing up here this morning. Um, the, the goal with this, um, Sylvia and I, we met. Um, we've been meeting and discussing kind of the plans for Bastrop. Uh, I've had some thoughts on things. Uh, I would like to also first say that, uh, I think there's been some misunderstandings and misconceptions of things. Uh, I don't think everyone wants to throw the codes out. Uh, I think, um, that there are some things that need to be revisited, right? Um, Bastrop, I think we need to catch up to where we are and then get ahead to, uh, of what is coming. Um, and we've realized in some P and Z meetings and, and council meetings that we've had to make different amendments to the codes, right? I remember certain people saying, hey, these things need to be looked at again. So the idea is to not dissect everything or take it all apart, but to look through and see how we can improve and make things better. Um, she asked me what it I think was very important. And to Thomas's comments, uh, traffic. Traffic is a big thing. Um, we, we understand that there's not enough housing here right now, but there's, so that means there's more people than it is houses, and they're figuring out a place to go and to live, but they have to move around, right? So we have to figure out how we're gonna alleviate a lot of the traffic jams, get people moved around Bastrop in a more effective way. And to... I'm gonna get the name right. Sorry. Kara's, uh, statement, uh, we also want to increase the walkability. Um, and so that's where we're gonna start. Uh, we're going to get into each area. Um, and as you will all see, as we move through, um, there will be opportunities to touch on each part of the comprehensive plan, each part of the code as we focus on a particular area. And it'll give us an opportunity to have something to keep in mind as we move forward. Um, if there are things that come to mind and, you know, you feel that they need to be presented at a P and Z meeting or a council meeting, and that's for the commissioners and council members or even citizens, then you can also bring those there and we can talk about them. They're hit there. But the plan is to continue to have these workshops so that we'll be able to really get ourselves collectively on the same page and move in the right direction. So I'll leave it at that. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ishmael. Um, so as Chair Harris stated, that we have Saturday workshops planned for the rest of the year. And the plan is we're gonna meet on a Saturday to dissect some of the items that are of importance to the Planning Commission, and they're the ones that are driving this boat. The Chair wanted transportation and connectivity first. That's the first one we're gonna take on. We're gonna talk about things, we're gonna start at a fifty-thousand-foot level, and then we're gonna dive super deep. We're not gonna make any changes today. Instead, you're going to direct me and staff to bring things back to the next P and Z meeting. You may direct us to bring back more information. You may direct us that, nope, we absolutely believe that needs to be changed. Bring that ordinance amendment on the next P and Z meeting. And it's going to be a back and forth because there is not just one change that happens. It is a domino effect. When you touch one thing, it touches about fifteen things in the code. And so as we talk about transportation and we talk about streets, you best believe drainage is absolutely married at the hip with it. And so drainage is in a piece of the discussion today because today we're mostly looking at connectivity. But you can best believe as we start building and we were talking about streets and we're talking about traffic and we're talking about connectivity, there has to be a requisite drainage conversation that has to happen with that. And so that'll probably be our next one. Drainage and utilities will probably be our next, uh, meeting. And so that's the flow, right? We're gonna start high, we're gonna dive down, we may come up for air. Um, but I'm doing everything from a map. Um, we have a new GIS staff who has worked very, very, very hard to make sure things are, you can see it from the visual eye because we can talk about the text in the book all day long. And it, you know, it's very legal easy. It doesn't flow necessarily very well. And so when you can see things visually, it's a lot easier to be able to connect the dots. So that's the first thing. Um, the second thing is that no code is perfect. So there's this misconception that we got the B three code and it fixed a bunch of stuff from the old code. Well, that's not true because there's a bunch of copy and paste from the old code in this code as well. So there is never any one code that is perfect, and a code has to be a living and breathing document. You have to touch it. And Taylor is already going through their major revisions already. So this belief that, no, this is it and we have to live under this code, that, that isn't true. We're going to visit this code more times than I care to talk about ad nauseam, as I told the council the other day. So we're gonna talk about the existing codes, the master plans. We're gonna move into the map itself because that's where the real work is going to do, going to happen. And then you guys are gonna give me direction. What you want to see at the next meeting, what more information you need, and if there's anything that is uber urgent that we need to bring forward right away.
All right. Um, just as we're going through this, uh, I would like for everyone to please keep in mind, this is for us to work together. This is not a moment to be in here shooting slugs, um, or being contentious at all, right? We are here to develop for Bastrop. That's the main goal, not our personal goal. So let's all make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we work through this and build a bigger, better Bastrop. Thank you.
So this is a, a quote from PTV Group. They are a transportation planning organization that works all over the world. Cities are living organisms that grow and evolve. People come and go, and so do real estate projects and mobility trends. Due to its immense cost, infrastructure is built for the long term. Bridges, roads, rail tracks, et cetera, are put in place for decades to come. And so I want us to think about that as we talk about our transportation network. We are doing things a little bit out of order. We should have already worked on our comprehensive plan. You know, our comprehensive plan is dated twenty sixteen. We are working on the comprehensive plan, and everything that comes out of here from a policy statement will be incorporated into. Our existing comprehensive plan, uh, and I'm gonna pick up from here, says an efficient and safe transportation system is vi, is a vital component of the local economy and quality of life, i.e., everybody hates traffic. Businesses depend on the transportation to send and receive shipments and attract customers. Workers need reliable transportation options to commute to and from work, and parents demand safe travel options to get their children to school. So that's the overall today. That was a twenty sixteen title. And I would venture to say that the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan is gonna talk more about the movement of people in various ways and safe connections. I think it's still gonna have quality of life, but I think we're gonna be talking more about different type of connection things. So we're gonna go into the discussion of the existing codes and master plans, the pros and cons, and we've talked about what we're moving forward, how we're gonna be moving. So this is a, this is just a connector, and I don't know how many of you know that Agnes is supposed to be punched out. So this is Orchard. This is Orchard Parkway. This is South Side Meat Market. This is Orchard Parkway. So one of the things on the city's capital improvement plan is Agnes Street. So Agnes Street was supposed to be a four lane. Um, when we began to take on, uh, when I got here, Agnes Street was under design, but it didn't include sidewalks. We sent it back because we've been telling the whole community, we want to put sidewalks in, we want to move people. So we sent it back to design, and that's why Agnes was taken a little bit longer. But Orchard will connect here also. And again, we're talking about streets that have connectivity and sidewalks because we should be able to move people, um, east and west and north and south without necessarily having to get off and, and play Frogger on, say, ninety-five. And so we're always gonna look at traffic movement. How are we moving people? Um, right now, it is a very difficult and disjointed process. Our master plan calls for some connections that there's no way we're going to get the right of way in those necessary areas other than condemnation. Condemnation from a city process is very, very, very expensive. Land is expensive, period. And we get into long drawn-out legal battles with the property owners on how to get that. And that's the position we're in with Lincoln right now. We have to look at operational expenses and maintenance. Streets are expensive to build, and they're even more expensive to maintain. One mile of a residential street costs a little shy of one point one million dollars. That does not include any of the utilities that go underneath that street, and that certainly does not include the drainage to handle that street. That's just the asphalt, the base, the basic to build a street. When we talk about streets, we gotta talk about water quality, too. The water that is shed off the street is picking up pollutants. We do not have a master drainage plan that includes, uh, water quality features that protect the water as it leaves sites and goes through grasses and natural areas before it hits the Colorado. We have a lot of undergrounds. Some of it goes straight into the Colorado. And so as we build our street network, we have to think about where we're shedding that water and how we're going to protect our natural resources. Same thing with drainage. We've got areas where normally in the course of development, your home should be six inches from the crown of the road because you shouldn't flood. The road is built to carry water, and it has a calculation in the drainage system. In a lot of areas, we have very low-lying areas. And so in order to do some of the underground drainage work that we've talked about, it's an expensive proposition because I essentially have to cut the street, cut the street down to raise where the residential or the commercial site is. But to do that, there's already sewer and water and other utilities there that I have to take into account, too. So retrofitting becomes an issue. We're trying a new product in Piney Creek Bend because of the heat effects of streets, right? So those are also things we have to think about. Um, Piney Creek Bend is, uh, going to use a new, uh, product called Terra Pave, but it's called Terra Cool, and it is a lighter color. It's, uh, more the color of concrete because we have found that it, it reduces the degree of heat that street lets off. Those are important, especially in our residential areas, and we really need to contemplate those things in all of our areas, even in our parking lot standards and our sidewalks and everywhere else where we're trying to move and park people. And then the other super important thing is coordination with our other partners. It's kind of silly for us to plan a street if the county has no connection to it or there's no TechStop connection to it or Campo, which is the Capital Area Metro Planning Organization. Federal funds flow through Campo and then Campo distributes. So we're playing nice with everybody, TechStop included, to make sure where development wants to come, that those are super feasible places so that we're not spending the dollar by ourselves, and we're also not spending the dollar twice because that just, that, that's the result of a tax that I have to pass on to the residents. So we've talked about this. I'll go over it again. We're gonna review the existing plans from a map perspective. I'm gonna bring you every sidewalk that the city has. We're gonna pull up every road. We're gonna pull up the future roads. We're gonna pull up what the community did at the Development Code rodeo, where they want to see the connections. And we're gonna agree on what works. I'm also going to share prospective developments that are coming and why those connections are important or why we need a new connection in that area. We'll reach a consensus, hopefully. And if you've been to the doctor's office, you know the happy face continuum, super happy, super sad. If we end up somewhere in the middle, we've won. Not, everybody's gonna be super happy, but hopefully nobody leaves here super sad. We'll bring any proposed amendments forward, and then we'll make those recommendations to City Council. And we'll continue to do that through every single... I think we've got four areas that we agreed on. Transportation, utilities, parks, and quality of life. And then we left, uh, oh, well, drainage is in utilities. I think we left an other. So...
Sylvia, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Again, what we're doing so far. I think everything we're doing, what you've said is great. I do have... Can you use this off?
Thank you.
I do have one question, and that is, um... Hello?
Yeah.
As you mentioned, every change is gonna have kind of a ripple effect. If we make a recommendation out of the meeting today that we take to the staff, the staff gets it approved by the City Council, and then we come back later and four meetings, you know, four workshops later, we realize that that particular thing has a negative effect on where we are five months from now, how do we go back and change it? Why don't we wait to take all the recommended, uh, changes to the council so that if we have to come back and jimmy something a little bit later, we can do that? I mean, does that...
And that's, that's up to the commission. I think there are some items that, there's a couple of boards that are wanting to bring those items forward, like trees are super important, some of our quality of life and park exemptions, those are super important.
You're talking about parks? Is that what you said, parks?
Yeah. They don't want to wait for things to be, uh...
Well, wouldn't it be better for us, wouldn't it be better for us to get it right? Rather than, I mean, if we're talking about four or five months?
Sure. So I'm gonna show you. Anything that we touch has that domino effect.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well...
And so part of staff's job is any recommendation that the P and Z commission makes, we have to come back and bring you everywhere that it touches.
Okay. Just, I just want to note that if we take amendments piecemeal, it could have a negative effect...
Sure.
Somewhere down the road. That's all I'd like to note.
Sure. And you're absolutely right. There are, um, multiple paths of where things have happened. So some items for discussion, and this is not an all exhaustive list, is, uh, number one, the grid system that's inherent in the, uh, technical manual and the design manual. Um, and I do want to say that we no longer have a pattern book. Um, that was deemed illegal because the city of Bastrop is not a local government corporation. We cannot put in, the government does not, the state of Texas does not allow us to regulate aesthetics at all, period, over said done. You can regulate aesthetics in two ways. You're in an HOA and you knew that you bought into those rules, or your community has become a local government corporation. And even then, there are rules on where that can apply. We have a very good defense in applying a local government corporation in what is historic Bastrop, um, but we're hard-pressed anywhere else. And so in the code, there used to be something called the Iredelle District. The Iredelle District came to be, um, they, the staff started down the path of a local government code. And to do that, you have to create a boundary of where that code is going to be. And fifty-one percent of the property owners who would be affected by that code have to agree. Staff started down that path. We didn't quite get to fifty-one percent. The, uh, writers of the B three code came to staff and said, you can do it this way in the pattern book. Um, legal questions. And then about a year ago or so, legal came back and, uh, issued a memorandum to the City Council that said you cannot, uh, enforce the pattern book in what was the Iredelle District. So there's been some community folks who have worked to perhaps modify the boundaries of the Iredelle District. And we do have to pick up the conversation about a local government, um, a certified local government. So... So, um, again, one mile of street is one point one million dollars. And again, that's exclusive of, of utilities. We've gotta talk about what sections of town does that make sense? And again, we're gonna look at it from the map. Are there connections that we want to see that are not shown on any of our transportation plans that are absolutely missing? Are there sidewalks that are absolutely missing that we don't have connection points to? And how wide and where do we want those sidewalks? So do we want a standard sidewalk? Or do we want what's called a hike and bike trail that's ten feet that allows for golf carts and bicycles and pedestrians to all be mixed? Um, we've gotta look at design criteria. What are the impacts of the drainage system? And then this is some of the operational stuff that we've gotta talk about. So right now, the street warranty is only two years. Well, the development is already occurring. And so two years happens very quickly. And by the time we take the streets, we accept the street, the eighteen-wheelers have gone in, the cement trucks have gone in, and that street isn't exactly perfect. And so now it's on our nickel, and we become the maintainer of that street. So I want to talk about the warranty, and I want to talk about the sequence of that. Should we allow developers to start going vertical before that street is finally finished? Or maybe we finish the street at fifty or sixty-five percent of the development so that we get a better street at the end of it? And then we've gotta talk about lighting. So, um, the city of Bastrop, we're not quite a dark-skies city, but we do want to be dark-sky compliant. So we've gotta talk about the lighting standards in our street path if this is exactly the path that we're going to, uh, want to go forward with. So we're gonna pull up a... These are all of the layers that are gonna be shown on the map I'm about to show you. Campo, TechStop, Bastrop County, city of Bastrop, and we've got our master transportation plan and capital improvement plans. And so this is kind of where we're gonna launch our, our discussion.
Sylvia, I have one other question.
Sure.
Have, have you and the staff had a chance to, you know, I mean, if we take these things one at a time, is it possible for you and the staff to present to us where your staff has been having problems so that we can kind of focus in on alleviating some of where there are problems? I mean, we've been saying, if you bring to us the list of problems, then maybe we could start from there. I'm just trying to think about, in fact, we're trying to eat this elephant one bite at a time, and it's an elephant that was put together over two years and it was based on XYZ. And again, I still don't have the kind of history that I would love to see. It's not going to happen, I get it. But if we could also have some recommendations from the staff that says, these are consistent and inherent problems.
Per chapter or per topic?
Per topic. I mean, if that's the way you want to do this, is by topic, then it at least helps us try to figure out.
What are we trying to solve?
What are we trying to solve?
Sure. So we will first start with, oh gosh. Twenty two, five, oh, yeah. We've also got the screen turned on, so if we need to get interactive and draw certain things, we'll, we'll be able to. So this is the city limit line. You see this sort of road, 25 acres. This had been the movie studio, 304 Studios, I think it's called, and it was D and X development agreement, and it has actually even removed itself from the ETJ. So we have this little hole of 25 acres that is a southern portion of Lover's Lane that, you know, it's legal because it at one point touched, it doesn't touch anymore. So these are the current city limits. I will tell you that we are working through a development agreement to a subdivision in this area, and it is called Ironwood Development. It is 11 hundred homes, and their development in our agreement with the county allows for annexation of 304 down to Ironwood. We're also working with the county partners and other developers as they come in, annexing swaps of FM 969 and FM 20 because this happens to be where the major growth pattern is existing. So any questions on that first layer? All right, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you point out to me on the map where we've got flood issues, the top right of the map? Any kind of flood issues happen, minimum?
Sorry, let me pull up a different map.
Just so I can kind of see.
Sure. Do you want to light that up anymore?
No, it's good.
Yeah. Okay, so let's talk about, the first one is, let's just start again from a super high level. What is TechStop planning in the TechStop 25? Those are all TechStop projects. Those are TechStop improvement projects for widening of those roads. 969 is in the TechStop plan as a mod four. We're having conversations about it being a mod six. That means a six lane divided highway. Four. Four lane divided. Okay, so these are the TechStop roadways, these big yellow roadways. Anybody have any question on the yellow roadways? And this is county, this is countywide. There's the county line against Trump's.
So over 71 over there, is that a gap, is that because it's an overpass?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna, I'll, I'll bring up some bridges here in just a second.
I was just going to ask that, where are the plans for the bridges going over 71?
Oh man, you guys can't wait, all right, all right. So this is the CAMPO plan, this is the Capital Area Metro Plan. So you can see they build on the yellow spines and they begin to add additional color and connectivity, somewhat along with same TechStop pattern, but then we've got improvements to 71. Then we're going to go to the county's plan. There's the county plan. Everywhere you see a round dot is a bridge. So you can begin to see how traffic's going to start moving through the.
So the county plans on making improvements before, like well before TechStop's going to go in and make changes?
Well, the county plan and the CAMPO plan match, and the TechStop plan has to match the CAMPO.
Good.
So there, it, it's all in concert. So it's super important that our plan matches what's happening, that we don't try to build a road, you know.
Yeah.
Somewhere that's not there. Yeah. Okay, and then we're going to look at the city of Bastrop's master transportation plan. And those are the green lines. So I will. So we talked about Orchard connecting. Orchard, then this is Agnes, Agnes will connect. This is a street called Green Leaf Fisk that also ends up connecting. This street, we have acquisition problems right there. And so I can tell you, we are going to have to work really hard to resolve that acquisition problem. The same thing, this is Lakey that comes across, makes the turn, comes across. The city's transportation plan calls for Lakey to connect at Harles and send that traffic into Riverside Road. It calls for connection to Jessica and to send that traffic into Riverside Road. I know, everybody has said, no, hell no, we're not going to do that. So we need to make those changes on the map. Mesquite Street and improvements off of 95 end up connecting toward the back and connecting back to 969. Most of the improvements are centered around, this is existing improvements that have to happen. These were improvements that were planned, a portion of, through the industrial park that the EDC was working on, and those plans may or may not happen anymore because of the feasibility study for the sports complex.
For the sports complex?
Mm-hmm. And then we have connection at Shiloh Road that ends up connecting all the way up to the, back up to Jackson Street. Again, none of this has been acquired. We have some right-of-way easements from the movie studio, but now that they've been D and X, I don't know that we're going to be able to get this connection point without some pretty serious land acquisition.
Sylvia? Okay, so I know as you're talking, right, we, we're looking at some things that may be set or guaranteed or things that you're, as you're saying, we're having a little trouble with the acquisition of them. What are we looking at that's pretty much guaranteed? Not, not guaranteed, but that we can expect to move without any or major hiccups?
Move what's already in progress.
Okay, so the connection point going down Mesquite all the way over to 969, we can expect that to happen?
That's in a, a plan, it's looking to be.
Okay.
And again, if this, if this commission decides, that's not a good connection point, let's move that connection point somewhere else. That's the capital improvement plan, that's pretty much an, uh, a planning and zoning recommendation because you guys need to see the capital improvement plan. We don't have any new capital improvement plans, that's why you didn't see any this year. But if there's any amendments to that plan because you don't want to see one of those connections, again, that's a recommendation that y'all make, when you bring it back, we make modifications and then keep that.
Okay, I'm not sure if, if everyone on the P and Z has it, is there a way we can get that to everyone?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then so right now, what is in plan and what's already been left in terms of design and construction is, Lakey is in design. We're at more than 50% design at Lakey. Agnes Street is 100% design. We're expecting that to go out for bid in the September timeframe. And Orchard Street is part of a development that is happening along that corridor, and that developer will contribute to the construction of Orchard Street. Green Leaf Fisk would be a great one to have happen so that we can continue to move people out of the Palm Park into other areas and solve that traffic congestion that's happening at that intersection. That one's going to, again, take us a little bit longer. So those are the ones right now in plan. And then we have, how many of you have seen the connection off of 71 as you're driving through? There's a clearing, we're laying a water line there, and that is connecting from the elevated storage tank at Adleton, and it is connecting to what is the Valverde subdivision right up here. So we have possession and use to lay the water line. We still need to get past the, the, the rest of the legal, legal stuff to lay the road, but eventually there will be a connection up into that subdivision.
Do you see anything right now that needs our immediate attention as far as like making changes to what that map looks like? Like what would you say is like your most important area of concern right now?
Anything that is heading, uh, anything that is heading west. So Valverde has a, a road that's getting across, it's going to connect.
And, and real quick too, um, this is a workshop, right? So if there are, I know we went through citizen comments, but there, if there's anything from anyone in the audience that, a question that might pop up, please feel to, feel free to raise your hand. Pablo, I, I see your hand, but I'm, I'm just trying to finish my statement first before I get to you, Pablo. Okay, what do you have? Oh, well, we'll wait till she addresses Jordan, but then.
So this is the connection that I'm talking about, that is a connection that ends up cutting across that's a position and connecting onto this major highway. We've got to get people off of line. That is a lot of traffic that is still there. So this is, in my mind, absolutely one of the most critical.
I, I think, so I think where I was going with that, do you see any parts of the current plan that immediately we might need to address or make changes to as far as remapping where those roads or connection points go? Like you mentioned right there, in Riverside, that's a big one. Are there any others that you might have in mind or on the top of your head?
That Green Leaf, Green Leaf Fisk might need to, uh, might need to change because that's a function of acquisition.
Okay, so I, I mean, as far as for the remainder of the, the current plan, like planned streets, Riverside's a big one, are there any other places outside of those two that you mentioned that you might see need change or attention?
No, not immediate, and, and I'll bring up the rest of the grid.
Got it.
We're still at, we're, we're kind of at 10,000 feet, we're going to dive a little bit. So the next layer that I'll put up.
Okay, can we get to Pablo real quick? Yes. Yeah, sure, please.
Planning director, correct?
Uh, senior planner.
Senior planner, okay.
Our planning director is in August.
Who's the planning director? I, I would think that, uh, planning director would be up here. Okay. Uh, let me say something. So you, you brought up the pattern, the pattern book and you said you, has it been just eliminated? What, what is, what has been cut from that?
The pattern book, all of it.
Okay, so I just want to read, uh, this is from the pattern book. We all worked on this, so I'm going to read it right from there. Now, the pattern book is mandatory, as you mentioned, in the Iredelle District. Don't have the Iredelle District, no longer mandatory. Very next sentence, "The pattern book shall serve as an education and inspiration in areas where it is not required to be utilized." So you just threw away a bunch of ideas that a lot of people worked hard on, and this grid and everything you're about to chop up is in the pattern book. The history about it, how it's part of, uh, Bastrop, if you don't understand why we have that and you're about to go and chop things up, just think about what you're doing. You're piecemealing, no one's talked about why do we have it? And that's a question of why. How do we do it? That's what you're talking about. We have a problem, we need to make these connections, and you're, you're doing a technical assessment. It's like, but how do you know you need to cut there? So I'm going to give you something, I just remember, uh, a movie is called Amadeus. It's about Mozart, and he wrote a symphony, and I think he wrote it for a king or some big, big shot. And the guy didn't like it because it was too long, so he told Mozart, you need to, you need to chop it down, down to like three minutes or something. And says, well, I'll just give you a whole new, I'll just give you a whole new symphony because that symphony that I gave you, I cannot take one part of it out. Now, yes, we need to do something with the V3 code, I agree, we need to fine tune it. But the minute you start cutting parts of it out, you're going to really gut something and you're going to end up with things that are disjointed. My fear with this is that we're going to have two different cities. We're going to have historic Bastrop, that's the town that everybody moves to Bastrop for because they've come here, they shop, they see the beautiful things, has a lot of potential. And then you're going to have just suburbia sprawl on the other side of the, of the river. And so why did we do this? Because we wanted to make sure that these, that when Bastrop was going to grow, it had a vision to it. And so just cutting out the pattern book, in my opinion, big mistake.
Thank you.
Did you just say that the pattern book is a guess?
Right, so that's.
Drawn out by the state.
Yes.
For Iredelle District. Iredelle District is right here.
Okay.
But for everything else, it's a guide, it's a guidebook.
Thank you. And just on your, your statement of being two different cities, being someone that's grown up here, I'm looking at three different cities right now, right? Three different cities within the city, so we're trying to simplify that. Again, I think we're all on the same page of trying to make Bastrop better and, uh, be good if everyone is open-minded to what we're trying to do. We're going to be open-minded to what the citizens would like. We need for everyone to be open-minded with what we're trying to do.
I think we need to say one more thing, and that is that I, I, I do agree with Pablo that if we come in and we start chopping things up, we make an exception here, then how do we not make an exception there? You know, my concern is that we really need to keep the entire thing in mind as we start considering how we're going to like piecemeal this thing together.
Well, here's a point. Talking about two different cities, if you keep the pattern book to just Iredelle District, you have two different cities. So it has to go, and you develop.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Worth on both sides.
Can you introduce yourself real quick, please? To the mic, please.
I'm Danar Owens, I live off of 304. Uh, I just have to say, I know that we want, I, I've grown up, I lived here, I graduated from Smithville, went to school, came back. Um, as far as like being different towns, so if I didn't live in Bastrop, I would live in New Braunfels. It is my absolute favorite town. I love that you can go downtown and you can find that charm, and you find the cool restaurants and the nice fun bars or whatever. And, but then New Braunfels has also taken and they are addressing some of that more, the active baby boomers and the active younger generation, and they're putting their Top Golf and their apartment complexes on the east side of 35. And to me, that is something that I think that Bastrop could essentially do the same. And we're not taking away from our charm downtown because people are still being driven there, but not everybody can live downtown. So we have to find other places for them to be entertained and to live. So when you're making those comments, please keep that in mind. Like we have to go somewhere, you have to get something for the young people to do. And I think we talked about specifically that team moving here.
Right.
Please keep that in mind, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, if you look at, at bigger cities, and I've lived in Austin, Corpus, Dallas, you have Austin, but within Austin, you have East Six, you have the Domain, you have South Ammar, all these different places that people affiliate with that are somewhat separate from each other, but at the end of the day, it's all Austin. So, um, we got to, I mean, I don't think we're trying, anyone's trying to split the city apart, but having different areas, like she was saying, where, hey, this area might be specifically for suburban sprawl or housing, and this area is, hey, we have entertainment and commerce and food. I mean, we already see that happening here. I, I don't think any of us here want to split our town up.
No.
Into, into multiple towns, it's just, you know, there's so many people moving here. We're going to have to build and, uh, as long as we are paying attention to preserving our historic areas and then being mindful on the new growth, then we're, we'll be fine.
So the, the code book intended to do just what you're talking about in terms of Austin, in terms of character. It's absolutely intended to do that. The legal mechanism in which to do that didn't pass muster. So we got sent back to the starting point. The Historic Landmark Commission and others want to pick up the certified local government component within the, what was, uh, the Iredelle District, but within a modified boundary. So there is a move afoot that, yes, we do want to protect within, you know, certain areas. The pros to that is, yes, you get to protect what was historic Bastrop. The cons to that are, we have deep aesthetic requirements that, you know, some could argue infringe on landowners' rights to what they want to do on their property.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing we saw with V3 is, is trying to get the, the downtown characteristic traits to fit in areas that don't make sense. So when we're planning this and making changes, we got to make sure that the changes that we. we gotta make sure that the changes that we do make can be applied in areas outside of the downtown area. Because every property is different. A downtown style property in a small lot in a grid pattern isn't gonna necessarily make sense in a wide open area off 304. So that's probably the changes that we, we need to look at. But like you said, not go to, to a point to where if we do make a change, it has that ripple or like a snowball effect of, hey, well. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
How do we, if, if the, uh, pattern book is not possible, it's possible to use in either district, but not every place else, how you distinguish between the two? Don't we have to rebuild the whole thing?
Yes, yes, so, um, if we went to a certified local government and created boundaries and the residents within those boundaries agree to follow those particular rules and we went down that path, yes, we would essentially recreate a pattern book.
That we could actually use?
Yes, that we could actually use.
So do we need to go down that path?
No, that's for, that's for another chapter.
Okay, I just, no, not, I'm not saying today, but eventually, right?
The Historic Landmark Commission, someone in the Historic Landmark Commission really wanna go down that path. And I don't know who on your board has assigned the AWD, there you go.
The man that's talking and.
And so we'll, we'll have some of that conversation.
Okay.
Um, the, the other path to that is when there's a planned unit development or planned development district, a PDD presented to you guys, that is also your opportunity to say, hey, okay, great, you want this from us? We want your development to look like this. We want you to have these kinds of aesthetic features. We want you to, um, match the characteristics of quote unquote Bastrop. And what does that look like? So that is a hammer, that's a tool that's still available to the commission in that particular process. It is a, it is a, it is a negotiated process at that point because they're asking you for deviations from the code. And in that environment, you can say, okay, well then I want you to do this. I wanted to have this kind of, you know, facade, I wanted to have this much percentage of masonry, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, did you have something else?
I need to clarify something, Sylvia. I'm not asking for the CGL, Certified Local Government.
Oh, we have, we have folks asking.
And, well, I'm not, and, and I understand that. And the pattern book, you asked the question, we're gonna do new development, not in the historic district. It should look like something, right? It should have a pattern to it. That pattern book has stop patterns for developers outside of the historic district and it does not require Historic Landmark Commission or.
I think we can agree that it can be inspiration.
That's what it says, inspirational.
Sure, it's not how that is viewed, but we can absolutely agree that it can be inspiration. And when they have a PDD in front of them, it is our inspiration.
And that's what I'm saying, that's why that pattern book.
If we agree on that.
We can agree on that.
Okay, so we got some clarity, alright, on to the next thing.
But please put that pattern book for that purpose back into the set of documents.
But, but, that's.
Yes.
That's your guy to put the initiative in.
Forty-seven, forty-seven pages of information of why we did what we did.
That's, that, so.
Okay, I have a question.
So is your motion then, because Patrice, because I figure you're gonna make a motion, to bring back to the next planning commission meeting, a path forward for using the inspiration?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, well, since that's out there, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Sure, I'll say.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
Wait, what's the?
So, the, the motion is to bring back the pattern book for inspiration for future PDD's developments, right?
And the pattern book is something that we refer to for.
An idea of what things should look. Architectural inspiration.
If it's just for inspiration, it doesn't have any weight or value as far as getting a developer to.
Unless you're in negotiations during the PDD.
You're negotiating PDD.
Right. So, and it's just basically saying, we'd like for this to look a certain way in this area. To keep the characteristics of the area.
Okay.
You can do that until it gets bumped up against the code requirements of, or code building companies.
And currently, we, we don't have that in place. We did.
We did.
When it was scrapped.
When the state of Texas made it illegal.
We did only in the Iredelle district. So the Iredelle, Iredelle district was deemed to be unconstitutionally legal, whatever you would call it. Um, and so because the pattern book was tied to the Iredelle district, they.
So, um, do you feel if we bring back that pattern book, we're kind of walking on that line then? If it was deemed illegal or unconstitutional? Um, but if you guys are suggesting that we refer to it during our review process of PDD's, wouldn't, wouldn't that put us in some sort of positions where they're saying that we're still referring to those patter, or those requirements to influence our decisions? Would that be an issue?
No, because during the PDD process, you're in negotiations.
Okay.
And so that is, you know, Katie bar the door, if you want this from me, we want this from you.
Okay.
And the developer may say, well, I don't wanna do it that way, in which case, planning commission has the ability to say, well, then we're not gonna agree.
Yeah, so then it's just something that we can use to refer to, so we're all on the same page. Okay.
Oh, because it's already happened, actually, in the, uh, meeting of the Historic Landmark Commission. The people want to do certain things in this particular house. One of the issues was the windows, and the windows in that house were 24 inches wide. It's a situation where, uh, they wanted to change it to, uh, 37 inches. And, which is code. And for the purposes of getting, you know, out or, you know, in a fire and stuff, stuff like that, uh, they needed to change and everybody on the board didn't want that to happen, but it has to happen. It has to follow the code in that situation. You can't not, it's, so, that's when you're in the negotiations, but at some point, you bump up against the code and, and you gotta go with the code opposed to what you feel that day.
And I'm sure there's designs that would work within the code that would not take away from the aesthetics of the house.
It does not.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
The exact same window, rather than 24, it's 36.
Thirty-six, right.
But it's important for the, for the commission to know, you, you have something that you can use as a tool.
That's true.
Not a hammer, but it can be, you can use it as a hammer if you're at that point of the negotiation.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I just wanted to get clarification.
Well, wait for your vote. Alright, so do we need to redo the motion or can we go ahead with our vote? Alright, let's go, let's give it the vote, Carl Rowe, please.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Alright, and let the record show that the motion passed unanimous. Thank you.
So we're getting, we're getting, oh, I'm sorry. So, um, we're moving into now, uh, deeper territory. This is the, uh, 330 grid system that was part of the B3 code. And you can see the overlay of the grid among, uh, existing neighborhoods. And so the, uh, the Grove subdivision, although it came in post, uh, B3 adoption, it, it's, they took us to court and we lost. And, uh, they are under what we call a decree and they're able to bypass that. So in the B3 grid system, it would have had one, two, three, four streets. Um, they have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 streets. So in something like that, do you argue that this can or can't move traffic better then? And I would argue the issue isn't the grid system within the street itself, the issue is where it spills out onto. It's spilling onto Agnes. And I would argue that the number of units here spilling out onto Agnes is more the issue than the grid itself. So we move down into, um, and some of our, some of our.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Why can't we do both?
You can.
I mean, why can't we consider, keep the grid and then figure out a way so that it's, you know, what we layer onto the grid doesn't cause a problem with moving the traffic?
So.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, I just need an explanation.
So for me, the grid system causes great costs later on that are being pushed onto the city in terms of operations and maintenance. Operations and.
No, I mean, I understand operations and maintenance, I'm just telling you now, what does that mean?
Is it because of the amount of roads that you have to park?
The amount of road system, now, I don't, I, I guess I should clarify this. And if we're trying to talk about recreating old Bastrop, the Bastrop, the old Bastrop grid was 400. It wasn't a 330 grid. Oh, close it out. So I can go measure any one of our, any one of our other streets, oh, here we go. So we say old Bastrop, right? These are 400 grids, not 330s. So, I'm just saying, we're already full of contradictions. Um, my point is, I, I don't particularly mind one way or the other. Whatever that street system is supposed to be, where am I? Whatever that, where am I? Okay, whatever that street system is supposed to be, but if we are going to allow a, um, a development who has come in under some sort of, because they're all coming in under some sort of agreement, then my argument would be, let those be private streets and privately maintained and not publicly maintained. Because a narrow street causes, it, it has its pros and its cons. Its pros in that there's less shedding, there's less heat effect, there's less, all of the things that we talked about, those are absolute pros. The cons are, it doesn't act as a free flow of traffic, it tends to congest. You're parking on one side of the street, the police can't get, the neighborhood never listens to the rules, they park on both sides of the street, you got a fire, we can't get through there. I, I want us to get to a street standard and I want us to get to something that actually works. And the width of our streets right now in that 330 system, don't work. We know that, you've seen it, you can see it all along, especially as you walk into the Grove or you drive into the Grove. Further than that, if you wanna do anything that deviates from the code, from the standard that we agree to, then you gotta pay it and you gotta maintain it. Why do, why do the residents have to take your problem on? And we shouldn't. And that's, that's my, that's my beef with that system.
So you're not recommending that we do away with the grid, you're recommending we do away with the size?
That we modify the size, we modify the standard. And if a developer wants to do something different, a, a more compact subdivision that has, you know, 22 foot wide or whatever the minimum street size is, they've gotta figure out a way to maintain it themselves.
Well, then how do you get your fire cut down?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
They wanna do that and we let them do that.
Yeah, right now, there's some proposed.
Because they're gonna maintain the street, I get that part. How does that, wait a minute, how's that different? How's that a different problem solved, solved for you? If we let them do what they wanna do and they build, you know, they make the streets skinnier like we have now and then, you have, you have the same problem, it seems to be, am I missing?
No, they should never be able to do anything less than the fire code requires. But our fire code requires a certain width of street.
So why don't we put that in the code?
Well, we do, but the problem becomes then the parking on either side of that street. Residents don't, you know, they're gonna face the path of least resistance. They don't all park in their driveways.
I, I live in.
They don't all park in their garage.
But.
Therein lies the problem, the streets gotta be wider.
Okay, so you're recommending that we do away with the grid?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we.
Well, it's the street sizes, the width of the street and the block size.
The standard to the street, how, how thick, all that other good stuff. That's it.
Alright. How is that, your recommendation? I don't have a problem so far. Is, how does that differ from what happened in that subdivision? Because it seems to me like what you're saying is that they put in more streets.
Narrower streets.
Pardon?
Narrower streets.
So I don't understand, it would give them the opportunity to do that. How does that solve your problem?
It doesn't, it exacerbates my problem. It exacerbates the problem. And that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, in this particular neighborhood, this is a perfect example of where the grid system would have been a better system than what they put in there.
But they won in court.
They won in court.
How? I mean, if they're.
That was the case, that was before Sylvia, I don't know. They won in court.
Alright.
Yeah, sorry.
Aren't the developers supposed to, aren't the developers supposed to do the traffic impact studies?
No, so here's the other quirky thing about our code, is if you build this grid pattern, you don't have to do a traffic impact now.
That's a mistake.
Motion to change that in the court.
Do I see, um, on this map, where does the grid not make sense in your opinion?
So for me, the grid pattern does not make sense within any commercial development, none. Because I don't wanna be responsible for streets within Pearl River, for example, and I wish Mason, um, had been on the phone today, we were going to have him. Um, I don't wanna be responsible for public streets in a commercial area. And I will just take the example where Tractor Supply is right now. So if that was in the grid system, that would be two streets and then three streets cut across. I don't wanna have to maintain the roads in a commercial system where the 18-wheelers are coming and dropping off supplies, et cetera, et cetera. That is silly. No, 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 we should not be doing that.
And I remember that when they were trying to get it, I don't know if they're rezoning it or they're trying to put those buildings in front, they're having issues with it because of the grid system.
Exactly.
That was one of the complaints when we had that big, uh, that, or they had the big planning and zoning meeting addressing B3.
Pablo?
I'm gonna read right from the code. So I think there's this idea that the grid is overbearing and it's really just a framework. And so you can exceed the grid size as long as you have some walkways at certain intervals. So if the grid is too small, there's gonna be too many streets to maintain and it's ineffective for the developer, you just put some pedestrian pathways, because you're trying to maintain walkability in the context of a bigger development. And certainly there's instances, like you mentioned, the PDD, where you have the spirit of the pattern book, but maybe not so, you're not holding it to say it's a hospital. That came up when I was sitting in your chair, we had a hospital. And they need to expand and they need to plan for the expansions and they need to operate a certain way. So at that point, we weighed a lot of the, the B3 on them and we kinda gave them some alternatives. But you have to start somewhere and that's what I'm saying, that this is just a starting point. And if you read section, this section on the block sizes, it calls out right here, you exceed, uh, uh, in P3, P4, P5, exceeding 330 feet, then there needs to be 20-foot pedestrian ways and that's on the developer, not on us. So you're still keeping the, essentially the idea of a grid for walkability, but for cars, it's much larger.
And that's what Burleson Crossing did, but it faced 70, plus comments at the last meeting and it ended up with 27 variances to it. And, and the point is, at, at a point in the process where things don't make sense, and I have, from a city perspective, no intention to ever recommend to any council ever that the city maintain commercial streets in a commercial system. And even though sidewalks in a private development should be privately maintained, they should be required, but they should be privately maintained. Period, said, done. Because when things shift and the 18-wheeler turns that curb and if you just go to Lowe's, 18-wheeler turns that curb and they're climbing onto stuff and the sidewalk shifts, that shouldn't be the city's responsibility to do that. It can be called out as a requirement, it can be called out to be built. It just should not be ours to maintain due to cost, obviously.
So then, now what we need to do is identify where we want our commercial spaces to be built and then remove the grid system from those areas?
Yeah, I'm confused as to what you're asking, Sylvia.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
What part don't you understand?
I don't understand what you're proposing.
I am not proposing any change to the grid system other than giving alleviation in the commercial space, one. And two, that we look at our street standards and not make them so narrow, widen them. And they'll, we haven't even touched sidewalks yet, so. We haven't even touched sidewalks, I ain't gotten to that point. So that's where I am in the grid. It is extremely crazy for us to put those in the commercial spaces.
So that's really all you're asking us to look at? Is changing the grid pattern in commercial space?
For now, yes. And we're gonna talk about something else in sidewalks. Everybody good?
Alright, let's move forward.
Let's go to sidewalks. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna have to remove the grid.
Do we need to take a break? Okay, you have something?
Uh, let me, can you send her the link?
It's, uh, through the CAD, correct?
Uh, no, it's a, uh, it's a GLS.
Do we need to take a break for anyone? Okay. No, I'm fine, I'm good. No, I'm good, I'm just making sure everyone's good, you know, it's the morning time, Saturday morning, I don't know what your morning routines are. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, master plan communities have their own, they're gonna have their own requirements. So, Ironwood will maintain its own roads because it's a mud, a portion of Alverde will maintain its own roads also. And, the, the difficulty for me in that regard is that these residents pay taxes, right? They're paying city taxes, especially if you're annexed. And included in your city tax is a bill for streets and fire and, you know, everybody else. And so, it almost feels like a double dip. And that's why we have to be very careful when we're negotiating with the developer, that we not allow something that ultimately, the consumer at the far end ends up getting double taxed. That's all I'm saying. If, if the grid allows a certain specific density because the developer wants to get that ROI and we say, okay, fine, you're gonna maintain it on your own nickel, remember, it's that resident down the road that's having to double pay. They're gonna pay their mud or HOA and then also pay the city tax and part of those city taxes are for road, um, infrastructure.
And they're gonna be spending their money at that place.
Technically, yes. Okay. If, if they're, so they're not double paying, they're just. Well, if, if, let's, let's do Pecan Park for an example. If Pecan Park was built and it didn't have an HOA and it was simply a subdivision that was built and those property owners don't have an HOA fee to pay, the city's gonna go in and maintain those streets. You guys have an HOA fee and your HOA is maintaining not the roads, but the parks and the trail systems. The city's still, well, it's a partnership. The city's still on the hook for some of those. So, in my mind, you're being double taxed. You're having to pay your HOA to maintain the roads and then you're also paying your city taxes for said same roads in your area and outside of your area.
I get it, but, um, I'm not giving understanding that each other, that's.
Okay. Okay. Sidewalks and connections. So, everything that's in gray, these little gray thin lines, those are sidewalks. So, I used to live in Riverside Grove and I used to have such a beef about, let me take off that layer. We didn't even get to the rodeo yet. Okay. So, as we talk about connections through the city, there are some pretty blank spots, let me get out of there. There's some pretty blank spots that have no connection anywhere else. And so, what I would, uh, like us to go forward with is, let's talk about where those connections make sense. Let's create a sidewalk master plan. Let's put some teeth in the ordinance that requires certain things to be built a certain way. And y'all tell me where you want people to move, you tell me how wide those sidewalks should be, because those are bigger movement areas, and where do we want those major connections?
And, and kind of, I know one of my thoughts with the connectivity, especially, especially on sidewalks, um, when you talk about authentic Bastrop, it's, to me, the conversation, like, it's always seems to fall back on what it looks like on the outward appearance, right? To me, uh, what makes authentic Bastrop is the connectivity of the people. Right? At one point in time, like, you can go somewhere, you may not know somebody, but you know them because you know their people, right? And the idea is, right now, are the thought, my thoughts are, we have, we don't have enough connectivity or encouragement of people to get out and walk to places, get around and mingle with each other, and all it takes is seeing a person from time to time, right? And, hey, that person's alright, and then now I'm waving at them, now we're greeting, right? And that's how we build our authentic Bastrop with the people and then, you know, go from out. And so, sidewalks are really important because it, it encourages people to get out and, and move around and it also, if, if they're in the right locations to get citizens to go to certain areas, it will alleviate the vehicle traffic, so.
Alright, we have a pen exercise for this. Tell me, who wants the pen?
Not me.
Jordan.
I have, I have one thing I want to say about that and that is, I live in Pecan Park and I, I know the disadvantaged, just smaller streets. I understand all of that. I live there, I have to deal with those cars. But, um, one thing I do like about my subdivision is exactly what Ish was talking about. We all know each other's dogs' names, uh, because there, you know, there are no cul-de-sacs, really, I think there's like maybe one or two. The fact that it's on a grid, it like forces people to kind of walk in the same direction and we cross paths and, uh, it is a real community. And so, that's just, I want to say one more time, I, I don't understand why, why the previous planning went through this and ended up with a smaller street size. I'm gonna try to understand that a little bit better, but, um, I like the fact that we're looking at trying to maintain walkability with streets and announce that.
No, that's good. That's, that's, that's good. And I, I keep saying, we're not on far ends of the spectrum. But I am beyond a dream in it. I've had to maintain it, I had to build it. And worst of all, I gotta figure out how to exact it. When somebody's coming in to build or somebody's coming in for a plat, and I say, it would be nice to have a sidewalk there. Well, nice and must are two completely different things. Your subdivision, I keep telling you, is not a B three standard subdivision. So, if it were to come post-B three, we would've said, no, you gotta be laid out and, would it have accomplished the same thing? Probably so, you might've had even some greater densities in your subdivision. But, the whole point about, yeah, no, it is. It is. Yeah.
You're in Pecan Park, right?
Yeah. The, um, the point about, for me, what is absolutely critical that we understand is, we can talk about connectivity all day long and we can talk about it in theory. What I need from this commission is I need a rule that when that developer comes in, I get to say, yep, sorry. I need this amount of right-of-way because that right-of-way is gonna hold this street and that right-of-way is gonna hold this sidewalk. And I need that and I need to be able to point to that somewhere. And those are the things that staff will go to the map for. We will not bring a variance of planning commission for some of those connection areas where they make sense. I, I have, uh, heartburn when I, when I was living in Riverside Grove, that there's only a sidewalk on one side of the road and I get why they did that. And then, we have this plan for a sidewalk on the other side and it's Hassler Shore Road. We have a plan for a sidewalk on the other side of the road. But there's a bar ditch and ditches along there. There's not gonna be a sidewalk there, not a cheap sidewalk anyway. But the businesses right there had right-of-way exacted for a sidewalk and so that business is this one little island with this piece of sidewalk. But then I gotta walk through the ditch to get, you know what I mean? It just, I want us to have good connection. It would've made better sense if we had had a rule, like I want us to create, that says, I'm gonna take the money that it would've cost you to build a sidewalk and I'm gonna use it to, guess what? Build the second part of the sidewalk that's from the mailboxes to Old Austin Highway where no sidewalk exists, right, Ish?
Right.
We have a spot, that same business could have donated or contributed that money to a sidewalk fund, where we would've really connected a sidewalk where kids actually walk. Instead of like a sidewalk to nowhere. So, when we talk about connectivity and want us to be purposeful, but man, I sure want you to create a rule so that when a plat comes forward, I get to say, I need X amount of right-of-way. So, I'm going to give Jordan the pen. Oh, okay. What color do you want? Blue? Okay, okay, you're good.
He does this.
Okay, so, let's assume everywhere that there's a green that has not been built, the city's going to put a sidewalk to. Let's just make that assumption. Because, like Agnes is a four-lane divided, we, we had to make the median really skinny to be able to get sidewalks.
So, sidewalks alone?
Yes, sidewalks will be there. So, you can, you can draw that over the group. Yes. Yep. So, uh, that will have a, that will need a sidewalk up, that will need a sidewalk all the way across Blakey. All the way across, all the way across. Yep, all the way across. That's okay.
What about the other green line?
So, this green line is probably not gonna happen. I, we don't even own that and that's a, that's a, that's a real super fine extension. Uh, and that one is most likely not gonna happen. So, you guys said you do not want this connection to pass through.
Right, right, that would be, I mean, no, that wouldn't be a good idea to, um, divert traffic through that neighborhood at all. Not, not that, not the traffic flow coming off of nine-six-nine. Oh, yeah.
Maybe pick a different color, maybe pick a different color.
Keith be leading the way.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of neighbors are watching.
Okay, I, if we're considering long-term, you know, that's a good point to consider for a while. Why wouldn't we consider sidewalks?
Well, that road would take a whole hell of a lot, a six-lane of traffic onto and dump it into Riverside Grove.
Right, that's why we don't want that there.
I know, I understand the road. I'm asking about the sidewalks and others.
So, yeah, the sidewalks should follow this green.
Okay, absolutely, okay. Yeah, we just did away with the road. I got that.
That's a sidewalk here.
Yes, so, that's absolutely awesome because TechStop put in that sidewalk at, uh, Riverside Grove. So, kids, and nobody believes me until you go see it, when, when you are at the stop sign and you see the big, uh, pylon sign that says Ross and everybody else and Chick-fil-A's over here and if you look to your left, the schools right outside Riverside Grove are over here, the car wash you're walking. Kids are coming across from the apartments, my hands either, walking across the highway, cutting and then they've made their own sidewalk path all to the high school. So, TechStop has alleviated some of that. Steve Durman gave extra right-of-way there, so that, that sidewalk is going to be, um, connected.
Right. Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and really, with that, we need to think about that with the schools and whatever future development that we have an idea that's coming, right, to where we can start constructing or having a way to alleviate whatever traffic flow might come before we establish a structure, right? That'll, that'll, to me, that'll help us with the, the planning, right? Instead of just having something there and then figuring out how to get rid of them, let's figure out how we want to. Well, yeah, right, so we're gonna have to figure out, you know, how we're gonna eventually alleviate that so we can put those things in place. Right.
Can, can we decide where a school goes?
We cannot.
No. And they, they have their thoughts and ideas already.
So, we work with our demographers and we meet with the school every two weeks to talk about population and where the school site should go. It gets to be very sensitive because the, once a landowner knows that the school's looking for a site, prices go.
Yeah. Through the roof. I'm just wondering if we had some idea when the school was going in, if we could then alleviate the problem of trying to have the kids, and we need to get there and just kind of put your plans aside while.
So. Alondra, can you, are you able to get us a copy or get her a copy of what the school bond and proposals were? Or she, would, you can probably look that up. Well, no, that, that just will give you an idea of what the school has planned, like some elementaries and, you know, middle schools and things like that. I'm not trying to put work on you, I just.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yep. So, it connects both the north and the west.
I just know you can take care of things.
Their sidewalk all along. Hunter's Crossing, right there at three oh four.
So, right, right, right in front of, right, on that, if you're going towards Lowe's, right, you know, right there, that dirt path, right? It's been like that forever.
So, um, the other, the other super, um, important piece is as we expand down Adleton, that section of twenty. Um, yep, right there, uh-huh, right through there, yep. Uh, a, I, that's Sam Houston where it says FM nine-six-nine, which is not FM nine-six-nine. Where's Sam Houston?
It's up there, right there.
It's further, nevermind.
Are there gonna be sidewalks going?
I don't know.
Right, because that, yeah, we do have.
I don't know.
Because we need, that means we would need sidewalks right here, right?
Right.
This is all pre-planned already, everything is traced out. What are, where are some places that we don't have sidewalks that maybe we need to add?
So, we have existing sidewalks also here over on the highway.
So, existing is right here?
And then we need to finish this connection and that would be like, suppose kind of.
Is that already being planned?
No, it's not planned, it's just dead end right there.
Okay.
And see where this sidewalk right here dead end, which is my point, the tree stuff. Let's like put it where, put it where it makes sense, so make this final connection if it does make sense.
Okay, so, pink is what we need to.
Yeah, and then, so right here, this is the settlement. So, this is, um, um, the commercial development will have a sidewalk along that end.
That's already planned?
Yes.
Cool.
We'll have a sidewalk there. But, in the settlement itself, we need safe sidewalk connections. They don't have anything. They have roads and curbs.
Curve, yeah, that's it.
So, this is also a planned sidewalk connection right there. Yeah, but that's.
And that development, that final platform is a pass, right? So, that we can't really retroactive to add inside.
No, it, it's now in our city right now, so we'll do that.
Yeah, stuff we need to add. So, this is going down right here.
Uh, north and south and eastern west.
So, basically to add right there and then we need to finish that right there. Yeah, it is.
Yep. Um, and then within Town Proper, so there's a lot of sidewalks that are needed here to finish like this sidewalk, um, coming out of Pecan, this section coming out of Pecan Park.
Is that planned?
Ne, no, that's not. Yeah, that needs.
Because there's, I didn't have to be people that are walking, so like.
Right.
That's a Walmart, so it's.
Yep, exactly.
And it's a lot of traffic right there at that intersection, that little T.
Blue lead are there. And they're, or they're counted for, okay.
And your sidewalks, uh, up. Yeah, there's some, there's, again, there's a little bit of dot right there.
That's a wall, okay.
We've got some connection points that we should.
Uh, uh, I, I have a question. Alright, so, I know it's, it's been brought up before, uh, but I think we should look at it again, especially with everything happening at Mayfest Park and maybe future plans. How are we looking at?
Oh, man, if I reduce this, his lines are gonna go. We will, we'll take a snapshot of this.
You got, you got some section right there, up at the top.
Yeah.
Keep going, right there. That's it, right there.
Oh, this is Mayfest?
No, that's almost to Mayfest, but that's the start, because that comes from Chestnut. Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, so, like.
We've got, see right here on Chestnut, it's intermittent.
Mm-hmm.
Like some, 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 none, some, 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 none. So, making the rest of this connection there.
Yeah, that's a big, is that in the plan already?
That is not in.
Yeah, that's gonna be a big one, right?
And, and like I said, I know we've discussed it before in the past, never really came to anything. Right.
Not all of it, it's kind of, it's kind of dotted.
So, up there.
I mean, there's people, there's people that walk around there all.
Right. So, and, and, and what I think about is too, you know, just how you have the walking trails in the state park, you know, maybe people being able to bike from downtown to get up to there or get up to whatever future events are going on at Mayfest Park. But, I mean, I don't know, I, it's just a thought.
What about within Old Town connecting Chestnut?
Do you have anything out in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think right now we're talking as it relates to connectivity to roads themselves. We will have an opportunity during the quality of life discussion that it has parks.
Here's a question I have, so.
But I, I have that down, so it'll be.
Um, what's going on? Is this connection point still feasible? Is that still something that we're planning for from behind the Buckeyes area to make this?
That is a, that is a marked trail. That's not a that's not a road, that's a trail.
Well, it's proposed, it's a proposed trail or connection.
So we, what about um, um, Chestnut to seventy one? There's no sidewalk.
I, I think right here, I mean, you see it's intermittent, we're, if we're trying to connect north and south.
Uh, uh, and I, I, you're referring to the west part of the road right along the soccer field? Right, because it's, right, because it's, you got the little small restaurants there at the soccer field, elementary, doughnut shop, it's potential for a lot. I mean, it's traffic there, it's, and it's, yeah, it is dangerous, yes.
Um, Commissioner Hammer was actually talking to the Boring Company that's going under ninety five, so this trail connection and, you know, come here and then we end up boring, but I don't, I don't know.
I mean, they can.
Seventy one and ninety five are dangerous.
Yeah, it's.
Are you talking about your side of the river or the opposite?
So you can go under the RV park.
There's the RV park down there, and she's saying that, I don't know if you've seen the Lopec Underpass, like how there's a pedestrian ridge underneath. Something like that.
It, it loops around, so, loops around.
So what she's saying is, what are the possibilities of having some sort of pedestrian crossing that's not gonna be the old iron bridge?
So that's a TechStop, that's a TechStop conversation, but if you guys want to direct staff to go and look at that.
We could ask about it.
Pablo, you still have a question, sir? Okay.
Yeah, so like right there. That would create a loop. If we hit that, now you know the loop.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna light up the grid and we're gonna see how it matches.
Um, yes, in downtown, that's seventy one.
Right. Just, you have to go, oh, you, not, not underneath, you gotta loop around and get up top and go on top, right? Gotta add another five thousand steps.
Well, I see people walking across that bridge all the time.
Right. That's what I'm saying, it just adds another five thousand steps, you know, you'd be good.
Somewhere over here, under, so that you don't have to go how do we get from here to downtown? On the streets along here.
There's sidewalks underneath this bridge, so if you're already on this side, you can walk along underneath here.
Now you can shift it.
There is sidewalks already right here that go underneath this bridge. But there's nothing that crosses underneath. They put it all on a, I'm gonna go underneath there, so every now and then people go, so, so, that's there, but.
Okay, so I lit up the grid system. To show that our sidewalks don't necessarily match the grid. Uh, but the grids are just placeholders, they're just placeholders in line, that's not the exact place where it's gonna go. Um, importantly, y'all are telling me, don't make that connection to Charles. Um, we still want the connectivity of Lakey, we still need to finish this major connection at the um, at the senior section. We do still need to finish the connections around Agnes Street. Everything along seventy one is good. This road needs a punch up. Once we do that road, it better have sidewalks.
Can we take, where we've got, we've got sidewalks, looks like we have sidewalks there already, oh, proposed. So I see where you're going in and out of Pecan Park.
Oh, here, here.
Yeah, can we take for the sidewalk in there as well?
Oh, um, is this existing Agnes? Cause I see a little stub of a sidewalk right there.
That's existing, no.
Yeah, this is existing Agnes.
Right.
So I guess that's okay. I'm just thinking about safety for people who wanna walk from Pecan Park down there.
I think that is Walmart.
Yeah, that's Walmart, yeah, so that's just the parking lot, so, I mean, yeah, well, so to your point, that section coming out of Pecan Park needs sidewalk, and then, but once you get to seventy one, you should be good. You have to cross this car, you have to cross two crosswalks, but then once you get to that, that corner there, you're, yeah, you're good along one fifty.
And then, and then Chestnut connectivity all throughout.
We, yeah, we, we do need to look at the north end.
Um, you, it's right here?
Which one? Steel yard? Oh, Casada, oh no, that's way further.
Cheryl, you live on the north end, do you, is there things that you see, and I'll get to you here.
They did a pretty good job of, when they came in to try to connect um that, all the parks to one another. There are a lot of side streets that don't have parks, so my street was fortunate enough to get a, I mean. My street did, because they were connecting Jewel Hodges all the way down to Fisherman's Park, but all the properties there in between don't have sidewalks.
Okay. Right, cause they don't have, right.
I, and I think I, honestly, we might be veering off here, but a lot of that is because people have plants and stuff that um.
Protrude out to the sidewalk and.
And that's one of the main, main reasons why I do walk on the street because of that reason, but um, the, the pine, one of while we were sitting here talking, I was thinking about the Piney Creek subdivision, have some, they have some very nice wide um sidewalks, and I was interested in figuring out what, what agreement was put in that development for that to happen. Um, the widest I've ever seen um for sidewalks in a development, but um so they have sidewalks all throughout that development, of course, but a lot of the side streets do not, or they need, and the ones that do need maintenance.
Yeah, so exiting, exiting Piney Creek.
So do you um, do you mind getting up there with the pen and highlighting some of those areas?
I only can tell you what's on my street.
You're just saying. You know.
Most of the side weeks, I would say, passed.
Uh, yes.
Yes, from Laurel back. I would say like Pecan has sidewalks, but off Main, from Laurel back, you're not gonna find me.
Okay, alright. Yes, ma'am, okay.
You know what, hang on, yeah, let's, let's also move over to the.
Right, now, you're talking about, it's not. Right, did we, did we mark that? I thought we did.
Um, so Walmart is right here, so you're saying essentially from this intersection.
That T sign, right where it tees? Oh, okay, okay. I got you, I know what you're talking about now. Right, that, that's why I said I got you, I know what you're talking about now. It's on the opposite side of what, of what we, yeah.
You're talking right here.
No, 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 on the other side, other side by the Comet Cleaners, yes, up there.
Agnes to Hassler?
Right. Yes.
That's Shaffer.
There's plans, yeah.
There's, this is already a, um, that's already a connected plan. This is a connected plan. This may not be.
Well, that's not commercial, right? Commercial family, not family.
Cynthia, you have a question? Right, that's, yeah. Right, that's why I'm trying to get to, to, thank you for pointing out a specific street. Wilson.
Well, man, that's a super dangerous intersection.
It, it really is, that's, and this is kinda why I'm asking. We can put a guard rail. Right.
So do we want that connection point?
So, here is the, here is the right of way that we already own. That could create a path. Now, what that means is that.
Is this down, uh, pine, what's the name of that road?
No, it's completely clear.
Okay, so this is that, it's, it's kind of the middle, right?
The, the problem with that connection is that it leads to Walnut Street, and so Walnut Street is in between Chipala and Buckeyes, and you're taking your life in their own hands. Right there. So we've gotta figure out a way to, you know, how do we move that, cause I have the right of way. Yeah, I have the right of way.
The plan's kinda like, it's kinda like that, right?
So here's the, here's the. So that's the right of way we already have. We gave up right of way and we gave it to the apartments, otherwise we would've had a straight connection there. So now I gotta figure out how to move people between the Buckeyes and what would've been the gateway project down here onto the existing sidewalk at seventy one.
So you can't go through that. Well, there's sidewalks there, right?
That's just, that gets to be a super dangerous, so I need to change it. That gets to be, that Walnut Street intersection, TechStop is talking about putting a light.
And then maybe having it bringing it up here, or we're not crossing.
So, man, that, that still gets a little sticky.
That's, that's bad right there.
Right, right.
And then where do you go from there?
It, the seventy one can, uh, sidewalk connection picks up, and it picks up the bridge and it takes you over that bridge down the highway.
So the seventy one.
Yeah, and then it picks up at the bridge. Oh, it's on that side of the bridge, it's on that side.
It's on the north side, okay.
And that's the, that's the bridge that, or that's the road that you kind of also take your life in your own hands. Um, you're coming down it and you get off at the Sonic. And then you're, you're, you know, you come off and there's really a three-way intersection right there. There's cars coming off. There's the cars coming in at Sonic and there's the cars coming out at Sonic, and it really is a dangerous, if you're on your bike, don't do it.
So on seventy one and ninety five, there's gonna be sidewalks, a lot of pedestrians cross right there, and then it, it'll follow that little.
It'll follow the bridge, yeah.
Okay, can we look at the north end, please?
So Wilson Street, see right there at Wilson right here? So Wilson doesn't connect all the way up.
You need to go from the tracks on Wilson, all the way to Mesquite. Uh, the tracks are.
I don't have a layer.
Yeah. So look, what are you looking for? So Mesquite, Main Street, then Wilson is up to the left of Main Street, right there, see it? Bingo.
Main, Pecan and Hill. Hill has no sidewalks.
Right, it doesn't, it, well.
I call them the main veins. Um, Pecan, um, Pecan is the only one that has sidewalks after the railroad tracks. Once you hit, oh, Main does up to Laurel, but after you pass Laurel, there are no more sidewalks down Main Street. There are none on Hill Street. I don't even think, yeah, I don't even think there's any um on Hill Street after you pass the housing, the houses and get to the school.
Right.
I mean, then Pecan does have them all the way down. Mesquite off of, the north side is not.
Right, that's, so, so how can we, I, I, I know we need to have a priority list of where we're going to have sidewalks, or do we not?
Right now, this is a workshop, we're gonna come back and take these maps and, and digitize it properly for you.
Okay.
And then at the next meeting, you guys go, okay, Sylvia, y'all captured it. No, you didn't capture it, but if you did, I want you to do.
Do we wanna finish this connection a little bit?
Yes.
No, I don't have it, but that's what y'all were drawing.
Yes. No, that's, if that's Main right there, coming, that's. So you have, so, so you have.
You get to Cedar, you turn left, there's sidewalks there. You go to Main, you turn right, you come all the way to the town. That's what it's really designed, it's how the parks.
This is Main.
Yes.
This is Ward Street.
Yes. Pecan sputters, you see how bad it sputters?
Yeah, it does, cause it's, it's not a whole lot of side, you, you go down it.
The tracks are right here.
Right, these are the tracks, cause this is the.
Yeah, you can see the road.
But as you can see on Hill Street, right, like there is no sidewalk going all the way down. And this is really important because you have a softball field, I mean, the Little League field, field over here.
And there's kids.
And there's kids all the way, right, this is a short distance between, like where you'll have potential events, right? Parent gotta go to the middle school football game over here, and then we gotta go over to the Little League game next, so we definitely need to have that.
Plus tons of people from uh, uh, living in these areas, especially about saying that big development that's gonna. Plus tons of people from, uh, uh, living in these areas, especially about saying that big development that's going in, they walk to the high school.
Right, a lot of kids, a lot of kids.
I don't think we have plans to do that, so we wanna make that point maybe all the way up to Mesquite.
Right.
Mesquite needs sidewalks, right?
It doesn't have anything going down.
Um, this is Pecan.
Right.
We need, we need sidewalks down Pecan, right?
Cause you see how it sputters. You wanna clean pathway. There, and then.
Same, same thing with Main Street, yeah. Oh, Main Street doesn't have, once you get past the track.
You, you gotta.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, um, the number one ranked, uh, transportation job back in twenty sixteen before all this was going on was Mesquite Street. I'm showing it to you here. This is top ranked. Mesquite Street was gonna alleviate a lot of congestion down here by going all the way from ninety-five all the way to nine-six-nine. Is that still happening?
That's it right there. That's the green one.
That's it right there.
Yeah.
Yes, that's still planned.
That's still planned. That was the one of the first ones we threw up.
Yeah, I think that, that kinda dovetails with what they're trying to be there.
Okay.
So, uh, well, if that's something one, then do we want sidewalks along?
So, I don't, I would like to, there's nothing out there, right? But, I mean, again, to what we were saying, we definitely wanna plan and have, be prepared for what's coming in. So, but we, we need to look to see how it's going to be.
Do we want, if this ever happens, do we want a sidewalk here?
Yes.
So that's not, yeah, but that would be the development.
Let's put that one, let's put that on a different color.
So all we're doing right now is just knocking out where we want them for.
Right.
So when, in forty years, they look at this, those people.
Right, right. Man, or, yeah, they, they had us set up for this and that's, that's kind of the plan. Because we don't fully know what it's gonna look like around in there, right? What kind of, whatever's gonna be placed, but. We wanna be able to, we know people will be there, so we wanna be able to alleviate things for people, like distress, give them walkable.
Now you can say, hey, build the sidewalks with the design. It's a lot easier to put in a sidewalk in the design than it is to go back and add it later.
Alright. Thank you Cynthia, cause I was gonna ask for that next.
The streets in between Pecan, Main, is it the desire to put sidewalks on, in those, those grids? In between? Cause you're looking at just the main ones, but if, and I know there's a difference because the developers put sidewalks in Pecan Park and others. But in between them.
I mean.
I mean, I don't see why not.
Yeah, what's our, what's our goal right here? Is our goal to funnel people downtown or is our goal to get people like the.
To, to next to the.
Sidewalks that are there down, that come from Dua Hodges, that was the funnel people downtown. So I think now we're, I would think that you guys need to determine, do, should we or do we need sidewalks on the north end and in between them?
Right.
You know, this here, maybe, this here is gonna be the one that's up there at Mesquite and Wilson.
Right.
So that's.
Right.
You're going all the way to Main, you go all the way up here. You probably only want to get better than both of them. Because in fact, there's not that many people to live there that actually live on the other country. So you're saying we need Pecan or Main? Pecan or Main?
Well, we can, throw a different color for it, right?
And Walt Ham's not gonna be the biggest one, that's what they do.
Okay, right. I got you. Yes ma'am, okay, you got something real quick.
We have a transportation manual. And, um, it has to do a lot with the population and that, but it, there's a table. There's a table.
So do you prefer a north to south on Main or Pecan?
Main. Cause you won't want to go on Hill.
Right, yes. And that, that, I, I, right, cause you give you, right, number of people.
You know, that's gonna use them.
I would say having a complete east, like well, at least one east.
One east to west to connect, yeah.
Because then that gets kids to the high school and.
Right, yeah. And, and I know we're spending quite a bit of time on the sidewalks, but it is, it's very important to, to, for people who are on their feet to be protected as best as possible, so just FYI for everyone.
There's a missing connection.
Connect that, and then now you have that whole connection here.
Okay, so, what I added, this green line right here, when we had the development code rodeo, the, the folks who were in the room said, man, we wanna avoid all this stuff. We need you to create a path around the city, so I don't even have to come into the city and mess with it.
Or have a long way to run with the light.
Yeah. Yep, and so, in this area, it's gonna be really difficult because these are already privately owned areas. Unless a development comes in, we can certainly, you know, this can be part of the plan, but, you know, I can't necessarily build that, but as developments start to come in within the city limit, and we can absolutely also discuss with the county what those, what that, let me take a picture of this so I can clear some of this out.
Okay. We're good, but we're good for this part of the map as far as sidewalks?
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, just thinking forward and, and I know, you know, there's a possibility up in here, but however, we did have the middle school and then TJ. We're gonna have to have some kind of walking, walkability to go up, because it's an area up front and you're not gonna be there.
Oh yeah, TJ, where are you? You're, you're down here, right?
Yeah. What street?
I'm gonna give you the pen, TJ.
We're always on this, so don't, don't worry about that.
Down here, where you did that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's proposed.
Oh, so, uh, like the industrial park.
Let me get you, let me get you though. Yeah, here, the industrial park's down there. Mm-hmm, uh, South Street.
Yeah, just trace the streets that you want sidewalks on.
So there's a little bit of sidewalk.
It's really tight on Jasper, so.
It's intermittent right there.
Just draw, just draw the line, so we have, don't, don't correct it later, but. That's exactly what I'm saying. And then go on south. Yeah, cause if that were a sports complex, it'd be a.
Down here, down here in the industrial park.
Okay, yeah. Cool.
Right, let me take a.
No, no, we don't wanna put people on ninety-five. Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, it's.
It's the people we don't like.
It's, it's been, it's become quite difficult for me to cross it on my horse to ride into town now, so I would say no.
This is the special California previous resident only road.
He's a brave man to go down Wilson.
I'm really a brave man riding in town nowadays anyway. Yeah.
Alright, so let's, um, let's talk about the, um, what the development code rodeos resulted in. So that's this big giant round that folks said, forget that hot mess, I ain't trying to be in the city, I'm trying to avoid that traffic altogether. Huh? Well, it's, it's gotta be probably a twenty-fifty, twenty-sixty plan, because a good part of that is outside the city limits. So, what I'm saying is in our master transportation plan, perhaps that. Um, but everything else is outside.
I still think we should like have it on the plan, Sylvia.
A conceptual plan?
Yeah. I mean, at some point, we might need to have some kind of loop around the city.
Like Taylor does.
They have a loop around soon?
Well.
It's not a big loop. So it's somewhat of a loop, like you can, when you're going down ninety-five, you can go straight through Taylor, or you can make a left and it'll take you around to outside and then you kick back in.
Okay, so we wanna put this in the comprehensive plan as a twenty-fifty, twenty-sixty idea?
Yes.
Yes, let's do that.
Let's see how it matches with the county, um, okay. Yep, so here's, the, the county are the red lines. So we sort of match right here, if I moved my line down, we could match right here. So that's good. Um, yeah, I think, yeah, here too, almost, almost. Here's a sort of a connection, if we moved our line up, we could probably match throughout here.
Yeah, so that big southern loop probably isn't necessary.
If Shiloh comes through.
Yeah.
Right.
The only problem is now you're dumping people into Tahitian.
Yeah, they do plan to come up into Tahitian. They do plan a, um, it's called Airport or Air. Here you go.
That's what they have planned?
Uh-huh. It's existing right of way that they have on, so it would, uh, come up, come across, and then go through the industrial park out to, um, seventy-one.
That's who the county?
Uh-huh.
That's insane. I mean, like I grew up there, so it's like crazy to think of being road.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so I need a few actions from Planning Commission.
Okay, what do you need, what actions would you like from us?
Um.
I, I know we need to.
So we need to talk about the, um, public streets and private development. So we'll bring you back some model codes.
Right.
We need to talk about a master sidewalk plan based on what you guys just drew, and we will bring that back. Uh, you wanted. No, you guys are gonna have to give us.
We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll prioritize that.
We will, we will review any text dot, um, connections for Pete's conversation about connections. We will erase the connection at Charles. And at the next meeting, when I have a cleaner map, we're gonna have to make the determination of what is a normal sidewalk and what is a hike and bike area. And I'm using the term hike and bike because that's text dots. That's text dots definition of a ten-foot sidewalk section.
So hike and bike is wider.
Yes.
What's a normal sidewalk width?
Six.
Six.
Five to six, depends on.
Got it.
It's gotta be at least forty-eight for ADA. And then, you know, we, and then.
Need some elbow room.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
And I wanna bring back street standards, thickness and width.
Okay.
And is it possible for us to kind of, um, I'm, I'm going back to my big one now. Um, the other way, this is going to exist in parts, and it might be easy for us to figure out, what do we want to, um, hike and bike.
You're gonna, you're, you're messing with the method of my madness. Yeah, so we're building, no, no, we're building, because this is the first layer, right? How do we connect? But what amenities are we trying to connect? Where are we trying to connect people? So you guys asked about schools, parks is the next one, and then other public amenities, the VA stuff, the county stuff, any mental health resource stuff, housing stuff.
Right, the plan is to, to try not to cram so many people with the same needs in one spot. Give them different options in areas within their vicinity's. Okay, so are we gonna, are we done with sidewalks?
I got one question for sidewalks. Knowing on Old Seventy-One, the speed in the, what, forty, forty-five?
Thirty-five and then forty.
You know, it's, so the traffic's doing forty-five, fifty, give or take, and you've got all these people walking on these sidewalks, two feet within whiz and tire going by. Why don't they ever consider guardrails?
Or bollards or something like that.
You know, or, or space to sidewalk off the street.
A text dot, yeah, text dot did not have the right of way necessary, and we may run into some of that in Old Town where we don't have the right of way. We might run into some of that. But I'm glad you raised that issue because that is a super transportation issue. I don't want y'all to do anything but think about it today because I've seen three accidents there already. I'm gonna bring up. I am going to bring up, no, I'm gonna bring up nine-six-nine.
Keep dragging it.
Nope.
Not just that?
Oh.
You're wrong. We'll find out.
I don't know. I don't know.
There you go, drag some.
Are you from here or where are you from?
Drag some, drag some.
There we go, there we go, there we go, there we go.
There you go. There's old Nick and Pearl River right there.
Yeah, there we go, there we go.
And where are you from?
So, right here.
Oh, the buildings, the apartments.
So, part of, uh, part of B-three construction is, um, building separation from a public and private realm. And it wants you to bring buildings really close to sidewalks to engage the public into conversation with themselves. That all makes sense until you try to do it. These buildings, if you've not been to where the apartments are, are super, super, super close to nine-six-nine. Ten feet. Twelve, if you're really measuring, point to point. You have to turn, when you're coming down Blakie, you have to turn at more than a forty-five to try to see the cars coming because of the curve of the street. We have to talk about that portion, especially among our commercial corridors. It's one thing to want residential closer to the sidewalks to be able to talk, et cetera, et cetera. That's completely one thing. It's a whole other hot mess when you put it in an intersection like this. So, I, I wanna plant that seed, cause I'm gonna bring back, when we talk about road widths and we talk about some of this connectivity, what some of those setbacks should and must be for safety reasons.
Yeah.
I thought you said the OP's making this four lane or six lanes?
Well, yeah, we're gonna have to pay for some of this, cause we didn't take the necessary right of way that we needed to here.
So does that mean the road's gonna get even closer to those apartments?
There's not that much.
So we gotta do what we doing now, Jordan, right?
I mean, here's the right of way.
So we don't have this happen again.
Cause it was the setback over like five feet?
And so.
And they're gonna be mad at, mad at us, cause.
Again, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we're gonna all at some point be able to point to that example of what we don't want to do.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard to keep those, uh, parts of the apartment occupied, I can say that for sure.
Well, I, I foresee several cars into those.
Into those buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Let's hope not, but.
We have an intersection in Corpus Christi like that. There is a, it's a T-intersection. There's a school on one side, there's a shopping center on the other. It's Prescott. There's, uh, Prescott Elementary right here. There is a shopping center right here. This is Galahard Road, a major arterial, and then there's a neighborhood across the street. So people are leaving the, the school or the shopping center, trying to catch that light and/or trying to hurry up and make that light, and quite often, they end up inside this homeowner's home, more than five times in the last twenty years. The city ended up, we ended up buying those three homes right there, but that's, when the speed and the traffic and the turning radius don't match, that's what you end up having.
Well, cause all it takes is a collision there to see a car.
And a car can go any direction once it's hit, right, yeah, so.
Just, this'll be a perfect example of what we don't want to do anymore, especially as nine-six-nine begins to expand. And if you've not been out there lately, Valvetta's already installed their portion of the turning lane. And so you're beginning to see nine-six-nine start to widen. The traffic component that is coming off of East Austin, if you've not gone and read the East Austin Business Journal, just go online and Google it. The amount of growth, the Travis County line and the Bashaw County line will disappear. We have a subdivision right at the Bashaw County line called Silverleaf. The school has a, a school site planned over there. It's a municipal utility district. Can't stop it, can't help it, they're doing their own thing. It's more than a thousand homes. Del Valley and Bashaw ISD will end up, you can't even tell who's who. So the bridge at twelve-oh-nine, we've already gotten text dot notice, we're putting it out on socials this week. The bridge at twelve-oh-nine construction will begin starting in the evening at the end of, uh, September. So, the pain that we're all gonna feel over the next several years with traffic coming down seventy-one, when it's done, it's gonna be great. But, understanding that all of these are feeders, because. But, understanding that all of these are feeders, cuz people wanna move, people wanna get away from traffic. So, as we talk about setbacks, man, please put that in the back of your brain, that five foot is not a good thing. You can talk to your neighbors all you want, but I don't think we wanna be talking to the passing cars right now. Or nine-six-nine? It is still a, uh, it's a two-lane with a turning median. So nine-six-nine on the current text dot plan is a mod four, which is two lanes, two lanes and a turning, um, going to a mod six.
Four lanes?
Mm-hmm.
So what, uh?
And a little bit of shoulder, they're, they're acquiring. So, the other thing that complicates nine-six-nine a little bit is the utilities coming through there. So, we've got Aqua, we've got Correx, we've got two different natural gas providers, and we have Bluebonnet and Waterdrift. All trying to fit in the right of way at nine-six-nine. So, we're staying uber hawkish to make sure that everything that we have can fit into that stu, you know. You see, if you've been on nine-six-nine and you go to the Pearl River, you see Big Pike? Well, wastewater was supposed to make the turn and come down, uh, seventy-one. It's not gonna make that turn, uh, anymore, it's going to go straight down to, um, it's gonna go straight down Bear Hunter. It's gonna cross seventy-one, and it's gonna go down Bear Hunter, and then it'll make the turn uh, toward the Hunter's Crossing area, and then it'll make the connection of the wastewater treatment plant there.
Where's that tribut point at?
On three oh-four, reason, but right, right up, right at Shallow Road.
Oh, that's.
Right, you know where Shallow is to the right, and then it's that to the left.
It's, it's cutting, it's cutting across.
Those are all those types of.
That's all those types of.
And, and just to the subdivision that Sylvia was referring to at the county line, it's right there on the south side of, uh, where the Berdals, Pecan place is at. Right, so if y'all noticed, when you're driving down seventy-one for quite a while, you've been seeing a bunch of le, like, yellow conduit, right? That's what they're all preparing for, and it's gonna be rather large. But, um, and just, also, right, all of that's gonna flow into seventy-one, um, and, um, I've kinda looked at it like this for a while, I don't, I don't really wanna say it like this, but this is the reality. We're kinda gonna be, in the future, similar to the Metroplex, right? Like where Austin is, like she's saying, Austin's gonna connect to Bashrop, Bashrop's gonna connect to Austin, right? They're, they've annexed pretty much everything east of the city limits, even coming into Bashrop County. So, we, we're gonna be right here, right? So it's very imperative that we do the things to prepare ourselves for that overflow and, and keep our uniqueness about ourselves.
Here's that connection off the twenty, that if you're, if you're at that light, you can turn around and you can see that the, um, the water line's being laid. Um, and that's also a road punch out there that will connect Valverde into the Colony onto nine-six-nine. And I have residents on the, right outside of the county line, who were like, we don't want that traffic to come through here.
It's coming.
Yeah.
And this will eventually connect to, um, the north part of Highway twenty-one. Right, where it, it exits out and just kinda seem like it's a dead end on that north part, that, that will eventually run down there.
Yep, and so we've got, um, we've got the neighborhood Adleton here. And, um, we don't have a whole heck of a lot of sidewalks connecting, but this is going to be, this is also a very, in my mind, a very dangerous intersection, and, you know, it's, it's again, gonna be one of those things ten years from now that we say, let's not do that again. This is a, um, the developer, her name is, um, Myra Gep, she did the development in Kyle, called Plum Creek. It's a big master plan community. Um, B-three feelish, they have alleys, they have, uh, small, so that's what she's doing in that neighborhood. The school has negotiated their final site, we've gone through the site development with the school district. There's going to be a heck of a lot of traffic in schoolchildren spilling out onto this. And, if you guys remember the traffic bus accident that happened that killed the Hayes County students, those are the kinds of things we want to avoid, so setbacks, again, I'm gonna keep talking about setbacks as it relates to speed and traffic. Setbacks are going to become super, super, super important for us to talk about.
Well, this is already our, oh, that's our, set, way back.
Got another question, Sylvia?
Yes.
In the B-three code, we have feet per the path of street.
Mm-hmm.
Collectors are, 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 are you gonna go through that?
Yep. Because some of those, some of those really need to be revisited, especially as we're trying to, um, squeeze in a sidewalk, and we're trying to squeeze in certain amenities within certain areas.
It allows to have tighter regulation on those things.
And I'm wondering, if you mean that, that street, like, is a collector? Looking at the street side.
Oh, no, it's.
How did that, how did that happen?
It's not a collector, it is a major arterial. Yeah, it's a major arterial. So, we are hoping to get an additional fifty-foot of right of way off of that street, but that's gonna also account for utilities and a sidewalk connection. But, whether or not I can get it without having to go to condemnation is, you know, remains to be seen, but, but yeah, uh, what, probably when I, when I tell you that there's a lot of things we still need to touch, those are a lot of things we still need to touch. Alright, Chair, I don't have.
Okay, we, we don't have anything else?
No, sir.
I do have any, anybody else have anything, questions or whatnot?
I would propose, what we propose, that we have these meetings already on our schedule for the next six months, or the next four months, or however out we can see. Maybe we just get to the end of the year, so that we can, let's get them on our calendar, and everybody can know, everybody can know if they wanna show up.
You stole my thunder. No, go ahead, I'm just, I'm just messing with you. But, but yes, um, to what Pete is saying though, uh, we, we do plan on having these once a month, uh, for the foreseeable future till we get things going down the right path, or cleaned up, or however you wanna look at it, um, and. Okay, do we need to, should we go ahead and vote on that, or, alright? Second Saturday of the month, do we have a motion on that, P and Z?
I have a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second.
Nine to twelve?
Yes. Alright, can we call for roll, please?
Ishel Harris.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Keith Auburn.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes unanimous, second Saturday of the month, nine to twelve.
So what, um, what staff will bring back at the, uh, next P and Z is any of the proposed changes that we talked about. I showed you that entire list of, um, things of the transportation, that touches transportation. Will bring back where, what changes those things would affect, and the commission can decide, okay, we're gonna put a pin in that till we see the drainage piece, till we see the park piece, whatever piece, or the commission can say, no, I think that's super important, let's go ahead and move forward with that.
Okay, sounds good, um.
So the next meeting would be September seventh?
The next meeting would be September fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Yes.
Second, second Saturday, seventh is, the seventh is on a, uh, Sunday, I mean, the first is on a Sunday of September. Um, and yes, so, um, nine to twelve, right, um, so this is for those who are listening online, those who are here. Um, we encourage citizens to show up to this, um, we wanna be as transparent as possible in what we're trying to do for the development of the city. We also wanna be able to give you an opportunity to ask questions and have those answered as we can. Um, that's why it's a workshop, that's why it's set up the way that it's set up, to keep everybody close and involved with each other on these Saturdays. So, um, be sure to spread the word, let them know this is happening. And, um, Sylvia, what is the, uh, earliest that we can release the agenda for these?
Well, we normally post seventy-two hours.
Okay.
Uh, before, we'll put the meetings on the calendar, but, you know, there's an inordinate amount of work.
Right, right, I, I, I understand. Is, is there maybe a way that we can, not, not necessarily have the agenda, but can we just make sure that we can have the topics out? Maybe a week prior or whatever, I mean, we're not here, but the citizens don't, aren't necessarily gonna know.
We'll put it on the calendar with the topics.
Okay, sounds good. Nine, nine AM? Yes, sir. Alright, thank you for clearing that up. Alright, yeah, we kinda moved into updates with Pete's requests. Have we got any individual items that we'd like to have on the agenda, future agenda? No? Yeah, yeah, that's kinda what, right. Alright, so we don't have anything else? Uh, go ahead. I knew it was coming, it's his favorite part, y'all, here we have a motion and a second, all the favor, all the favors. Thank you all, have a great Saturday.